And it was always hauled in and I had quite a few loads on the for emergencies on, you know, on our yard. That's the way I did things all the time. We never, I'm sure Junior Warner, he knows that, when I came in eight years, we never went and picked up material. It was only from Proust who did it for a while because it was right next door, but when they closed down, everything was hauled in. I never ran the trucks. It was too much diesel, it was too much man time. It was, everything was expensive. And I, me and Mr. Rosette, we went ahead and he, because he would do it with the trucks, and said, "Well, let's see what, you know, what the difference is and everything." And I think that was when Judge Kendall was here and I showed him the difference of a mile by the trucks takes almost about a month, you know, back and forth, back and forth. I did a mile in a day with the two maintainers. That's a lot of difference. At the, at the time, I had the numbers there. I had the numbers. I don't have the numbers anymore, but I had the numbers there and it was way different. That's the only thing that I could say, Jeff, is we hauled in the trucks because I know, I did it for eight years and it's a lot. I mean, I, he might disagree or somebody might disagree, but I did it for eight years and I know it's better than doing it ourselves.
Can you, can you tell them what you're doing now to keep your roads?
Uh, what I'm doing now to keep the roads?
Oh no, what are you doing to keep people happy or what do you know about complaints?
I take them to Jeff and Jeff takes care of it every time.
James, he called, he called.
And every time I, every time I take it to him, he takes care of it. I haven't, they never called me back. I think one person called up, but you were real busy. I called them again. Jeff really took care of it.
Have you asked him to do anything specific? And then you said something earlier about you asked him to do anything for something, whatever.
Oh, well, I checked this morning to make sure that you had a maintainer in my precinct. Persetta called back. He goes, "Yeah, there's one on 277." I go find, as long as there's one in my precinct, I'll find, I understand you only got four. I don't expect two.
I've got four running.
Because you got, you're running four precincts, not only one now. So as long as you have one in my precinct, I'm fine. I'm, I'm not fine because I used to have two before the road system, but, I mean, he did. He spit them up. He did, he did what he had to do. I'm sure you have one in every one, right?
Yes, sir.
I know there was one on mine because I checked this morning. But it went on my problems, all my complaints. I had a complaint about 302 with Mrs. Mendoza. I gave it to him. I didn't know where the blade was, but whenever there is a problem, I do call Jeff and, I, I don't get called back. So apparently he takes care of it or he'll call me. James already took care of it or, so I don't know how big of, the complaints aren't like major, major, like four miles or something like that, but, you know, they're blade in a road or a tree or, I've got a lot of complaints.
James, do you have any idea like this county road 127, four miles?
I'm guessing four miles.
Yeah, four miles. What do you estimate that would cost to pave and do a pretty fair trial to pave it?
Well, you see, we're gonna pave it the county because I paved road, roads in my precinct too. I seal coat them. You can't seal coat from what I know. You can put a seal coat over an old paved road. It's not gonna last long because it's gonna all sink and everything, but it's, you know, you put in a Band-Aid on it, but you can't do it because I did it to, to my, the roads I had on there. We're not gonna do them to be able to withstand the weight of those trucks if they come back. There's just no way. Not even the state highways. 1199, I went down there a few months ago. I almost had a heart attack when I looked that out. You know, that's state, those are state roads and they're tearing them up. They mix cement with a base in there. They mix all kinds of stuff to make the base better. They don't have the funds to.
A week later, they're gonna pay them.
Yeah, the only way that, the roads that we paved in there, well, I paved in precinct three, there was quite a few roads I paved and everything, seal coated and all. They cost me a lot.
Fifty thousand a mile?
No, a lot more. My seal coated most of them and then we paved some of them. I, I, they probably $180,000, $200,000 on the, for seal coating and everything, did just a few miles.
Do you think fifty thousand a mile is a fair estimate?
No, it'd be way more than that.
More than what they say.
Yeah, because you're gonna, you're gonna have to drop the hot oil on there, then you're gonna pave it and you're not gonna be able to pave it 20 foot wide. I mean, if you're gonna pave a road 20 foot wide, I mean, you don't, you gotta pave it at least 30, 24.
The road there at 127, you could take a pick and, and hit the pavement and, and when the bottom of the pick would come, you fold it back up. There's topsoil on the bottom of it. In places it had about this much caliche under, it's a very weak road. It was real cracked up. It, it walk in.
Yeah, we had, I had a road, I don't remember the one right there by the shopping delay, if I can recall right, when we were doing the roads. We had to do a lot of work to that one because they had a caliche base on it.
Yep.
We had to do it.
The base underneath the pavement is just as important. If that's not more important than.
That's why in my precinct for the eight years I did it, that's a plan that we had, like, you know, we put our heads together. It wasn't just me, it was my guys too. I'd ask them for advice too, you know, just because I'm the boss doesn't mean that I'm the smarter one. So I'd ask them for advice too. And that's why we laid base material on every road.
That's why you got the limestone base in the brothel.
Yep. I, I never touched a road of caliche on that, believe in caliche.
That white stuff is anal.
But, I mean, it's good. It worked for 40, 50 years in the county. That's fine. I'm not downing caliche. It's just that's not something that I wanted to put on my roads because I had.
You have glass when you, you have to put something that's gonna stay there and you're done. You know, just patch it every day, every other day.
And when this came in, as you just said, it came in, I had a lot of roads ready to pave and everything, but it didn't, you know, it didn't play out.
But it's here now. We gotta make it work somehow.
That's what, that's what I'm discussing right now. That, you know, it didn't play out, but we're here now with the unit system and it's, we're trying to make it work, but it's way different than it was when it was just each commission had each precinct. It's way different and I know, I actually just got a call, well, this morning about that. But it's just way different and we're trying. We are trying, we are trying. But like Mr. Beatrick, he was put in charge of the road. He's the road administrator and all that. And from what we know, like the postman said, we, as a body, we can tell him what to do or ask him what to do or work with him, but out there, whenever he's doing his job, he's doing his job. He was appointed to do that job and, you know, I don't know how big, like, this is four miles of roads. I don't know what we can stop him and tell him, "Hey Jeff, and if you're gonna, you're gonna do this and it's gonna run over 50, you need to consult us. We'll work on that." Or you know what I mean, Jeff? If it's gonna be a project that you think that you're gonna catch static on, where you can come to us and you can clear yourself. I mean, we're used to taking it anyway, so, you know, we can, you can come to us and we can tell you, we can tell you, you know, yea or nay.
But ring, but.
But I think the other thing though is we need to have some form, like you turned all your road, we're returning our road reports and returning these reports. We need to have some, I mean, he's not gonna be able to see every county road out there. That's impossible with the activity in the county right now. It's just, even with six employees or seven employees, all you're gonna do is look. You know what I'm saying? We need some help on these major county roads that we think are really bad or somebody's calling us to go out there and look at them and then bring something back to Jeff so we can kind of help him, you know, on these big road projects. Because I've gone out on some of them and I, I go out there and I call you Jeff. You know, and then that kind of looks like, well, I mean, we need some help doing it because when I go out there, just like, okay, well, the judge calls, we're gonna go out there. So I don't wanna start that trend, you know, like, I don't wanna, you know what I'm saying? So I think the reports help and that's why I'm asking you, what are you doing to make your successful, you know, and it's just.
So what I'm doing? I mean, I don't get much calls, but whenever I do get any calls, what I, the first thing I do is I pick up the phone, I'll call Persetta and because Jeff was, you know, one of the commissioners, I know him very, very well. I just call him directly and I tell him, "Jeff, we're having this problem on this county road." He said, "All right, James, we're around the area or we're not. We're gonna get there in a week and a half, two weeks." I call the people back. I go, "Look, Jeff's busy over here," then forever. But he said he's gonna be here in a week and a half, two weeks. Give me a call back. If he doesn't show up or he doesn't take care of it, I'll be honest, if he doesn't take care of it, you call me. And Jeff will call me back a week and a half, two weeks later. He goes, "Hey, James, just to let you know, man, it's taken care of." Or the people have called, they have called me back. They tell me, "Hey, man, he hasn't gotten, he hasn't gotten out there or something." I call Jeff again. Jeff says, "I'm sorry, James, you know, we're still over here. I'm trying to finish this project, but I'll take care of you." Usually the next day or two, he'll, you know, I guess he'll pull someone up and he'll take care of it. So you asking me how I keep my precinct going or, I mean, I, I do, I know I'm throwing it on his shoulders, but he is, he is the road administrator and I do throw it on his shoulders, but I do take care of my constituents if they call me. A lot of people just call Jeff directly. If they call Jeff directly, I'm not aware of, of the problem, but if they call me, I call Jeff, Jeff takes care of it. He calls me back or if he doesn't, I call him back. We, we, we work it out. We've never not been able to work it out.
Most, the biggest, the most complaints in the county, precinct one and precinct four, precinct three and precinct two, we get a phone call once in a blue moon. But those are the, our biggest problems that we have. One of the, the roads are, the roads are, Mr. Schindler, he can just take a piece of paper and just tell me it's junk from one end to the next. He's got one road that we built up. We built up bar ditches and I'm still not done with it. We gotta go back to it. But we, he more than they have to rebuild the road from ground up. It's, there's nothing there. And 90% of the roads are gonna have to be brought back up and totally rehauled because there is no roads. And where the oil field traffic is running now on our good roads, uh, that we had roads, some of the roads, the oil companies that had re-topped these roads. Alvin's here, he can vouch for it. There was a road out in Gillette that EOG hauled up. They put over six inches of material on it. You go down there today, it's down to the base material that we had on the road and it is gone. And they're going down to the topsoil now. Every time you see a truck go down in roads, everything gets blown away. Dust.
I also have a theory when they're giving, we need to take. So they often have money and we need to work on that and work with them.
After you try and wall them, you're getting all the cancer.
Well, let's, let's just say that I put this on the agenda to pave this road and I bring it before this court and it's gonna cost $400,000, $200,000, something like that. Are y'all gonna be willing to do that?
You can't ask us to make decisions on the road. You're elected though.
I don't think we can, Paul. We haven't had much to do throughout.
You can't do that. Don't, yeah, don't enter that.
You know, I mean, but that's where it's at. I mean, these people want their road paved that is not paved now. And it could possibly end up on the agenda. I mean, you know, couldn't it, Bob?
Yes, it could.
Sure.
And we can talk about that.
You know, I, that, I would love to see it come back on the agenda, but I don't, you're gonna have to have a little time to look and see what's available, what we can't do. You can't do it tonight, but, but we anticipate that you are gonna look into this deal and you're gonna find a way to pave it since you've destroyed it. That's just kind of where we're at. But I, I realize you can't do it tonight. It's gonna take some planning to get there.
Yeah, it'll take a bunch tomorrow.
Okay, that'll work.
Well, we, we, and I mean, I, I see all these concerns coming in daily and my biggest thing that I hear every day is road complaints. So I, I mean, I really think that we need to start looking into doing something, but working together. And that's why it's on the agenda tonight for the five of us to figure out how to work smarter versus ending up in this situation every day.
Right. And I, I know I mentioned this probably at the meeting the other day, but I'm gonna revisit that. I would ask you, as our judge, when these people call you, keep a little log. You want me to just have one piece of paper right?
Right.
Phone number, what it was, and their county road. And then if it's my precinct, you can hand it to me.
I got, I got two today up here. I mean, I can tell you who these are, but I got two. And I'll hand them to you.
Okay, well, if, if.
Yes. And I, I don't mind.
If you don't tell me who it is and what county road it is, there's really nothing I can do about it.
Usually I give them y'all's phone number, just because I don't have a lot of time just to be, you know, sitting and keeping logs of these roads because then that's the all I do. But I will keep as many records as I can for you or.
Okay, I appreciate that.
People that come in. But also let us know when these complaints are coming in because we have to, we're gonna have to, the unit system's here and we have to work smarter to make it work. I mean, it was voted in and it's here. Now we have to, and that's why I'm looking at suggestions. I mean.
Well, the only suggestion that I, I mean, right here, I know the court, uh, the court approved, not all the court did, but it still passed, uh, on the, on the raises to give more money on Jeff's, for Jeff, to give her more money for the roads. And I also said that I think the money that was put into for the roads and everything, that, I don't know what exactly it was, a hundred and something thousand or something like that. Whatever it was, I stated and I'll state it again, that I think it should, that money should come through us and we should direct it wherever we're gonna go ahead. And we, we see that it should be, but with Jeff, we haven't given, we haven't given it a chance. Everybody's complaining there's not enough money. There's not enough raises. The people aren't coming because the money's not running. Fiscal year hasn't even gotten here. We're gonna, I mean, we're walking on top of what we just pushed the other day. That's what we're doing. And we're gonna make another decision right here. In my opinion, my professional opinion, it would be, let's let the fiscal year come in, let's see what Jeff can do with the man. That's why he got raises. If we're gonna make a decision tonight or.
You know what I'm trying to say? There's.
What do we try to make a decision tonight if the decision was made a couple of weeks ago to try to solve the problem? We're not gonna be able to solve a problem that we don't even know we can solve by what we did a couple of weeks ago. It's ridiculous.
You gotta give it a little time.
Let's give it some time. Let's give it.
Not, we can't do it.
That's the budget.
James, would it be, would it be in line to have an executive session, us having an executive session with him and give him some direction on what we expect?
I don't have a problem taking Jeff into executive session. I have not a problem at all. He can write down what he thinks that he means or something, but.
But if you need an executive session.
Well, right, but, but, I mean.
He just has.
Are you just telling me about money?
Not necessarily just money, but the actual processes. If the court develops some type of guidelines for the road and bridge administrator, if it's normal maintenance, grading the road after the rain, shredding the weeds, whatever, cleaning the bar ditches, the culverts, but when it's a major undertaking to a road, plowing it up, totally destroying what is left there, I think those kind of things ought to come to court before they happen.
Well, I think that's, I think that's what the whole thing was intended to do, but the problem is we're still very young in the unit system. Uh, last year, year before last, we came into the unit system three years ago. I don't remember that. About three years ago, four years ago, three years ago. We're very young at it. And of course, last year and the year before, the budget for the county was very low. And there was even money taken from the road and bridge, uh, money last year, I knew last year, and also from sheriff's budgets last year for other things. Those are two places that money really shouldn't stay, but it didn't.
But, but what we need to do now is we need to look forward, put the money back into people and these roads.
I, I.
The road is one of our biggest things. We gotta put money back into these roads. And even if the oilfield companies are putting money into them, they're gonna expect us to match it somehow. So even if they're tearing them up. We did turn down money the other day from oilfield companies. We were all sitting here and we got, and once we get one of those agreements coming, what I'm seeing from other judges is that they keep coming. And that's my hope, is that we can get that money, but we have to match that money and put it back into these roads.
But when you have a better situation though, with the county budget, because we do have a little more money in that budget.
Well, we gotta.
But you have to be proactive with the plan. You can't just be willy nilly. You've got to have.
That's right, the one. That's right.
And we haven't had one of those in 50 years.
But, but, but we need help making it and we're gonna have to pour this together. Even if we have a planning committee, I mean, because I can't just call y'all and ask y'all, "What are your ideas?" That's, that's a major none of them. But we have to do it publicly. You know what I'm saying?
And we're very young in the unit system, so we need some people with more experience. Is Ray?
Well, Ray's not gonna fix that road. Anyway, so if we.
You know what I mean, right guys?
Go ahead, go ahead, James.
Man, you know, we can't make decisions on top of decisions. That's what we're trying to do, right? We're trying to make decisions on top of decisions. It's not gonna, we're gonna pile, we're gonna pile up stuff on top of other stuff, decisions on top of decisions.
Well, I think you could approve to make a plan.
Yeah.
Well, that's fine. Like, I stated to Jeff, yeah, whenever he thinks, because it's really a lot of common knowledge on that one. You know, maybe, I don't know, we can get to that with Jeff and all that, but like if it's gonna be an oak tree you're gonna tear down, of course you can't just tear something down that's a hundred years old. You probably have to come to us with it and we get together with the people, we ask the people. I'm not just putting an oak tree, because I'm paving roads too. You know what? I'm using that as an example. So that's a, I'm not using it comparing it to four miles of paved roads because that'd be stupid for me to compare that to. But there's a lot of tree hunters that think that a tree's more important than a paved road. But, but you know, you know what I'm trying to say, Jeff?
But we're.
There's, there's gonna be times where we gotta get something together with you to where you have, you have to come to us on different, I guess maybe we could even get the public involved and see what they think is important to, that Jeff would have to come to us first.
But, but we're in a new fiscal year and, well, we're almost into a new fiscal year. And we go into that new fiscal year, we gotta go into a planning committee. Because we've been talking about this road thing. The bill is starting developing that sometime in February. We've been doing this since February and we've gotten nowhere since February, except the raises. That's what, you know, a little bit more money. We still need more. So if there's going to be something that we're gonna determine and that plan of action and reports and responsibility, if you guys think that grading something or shredding something required of doing something like this that we need to know, then that's something we need to develop those rules and those ideas. Because those are something only we can set forward. And I didn't know about county road 127 until Mr. Bush and Mrs. Brazowski came in with this little folder.
What day did you get that folder, Jeff?
Um, I needed three days to get it on the agenda. And I told them we could discuss it. They wanted to discuss it and.
Two days or five days?
Well, five days, but I'm saying 72 hours to post it. I'm sorry. What do you, what do you, I mean, is that what you're asking me?
I had it five days.
Philip, what day did you guys come in?
Last Wednesday, wherever the, we needed the, yeah.
Fourteenth.
It was on a Wednesday morning.
Was it on a Wednesday morning?
I listened to fourteenth.
And then I posted it.
About the bus.
I want you so badly, Dr. Pierce, but I can't. You know it's gonna erupt. You know it is.
I thought maybe there's a fourth member of the court I could say if he would.
I wish you could, Mr. Pierce. I got the.
I do too.
I know, I know.
Judge Shaw.
I mean, if y'all, you guys wanna let him say it.
I, I'm fine if you have some success or plans.
On my party, he has.
He can say it.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Mr. Siewert.
Yes, sir.
Just, I want to say, you've mentioned a unit system, like any system, it only works in the commissioner's court. Take it for it. It's up to them. Now, what y'all should've done, in my opinion, as soon as two new men were elected, all four of y'all should've gone together with the road administrator and checked every road in the county and prioritized. These ones need to take care of first and hold down the list. Then he knows what he's supposed to do. Then if the emergency comes up and, the road administrator feels like something's come up that needs to be put up to the top, then he comes to the commissioner's court and gets their approval. That's how the good system works. That's all.
So I think that, I kinda think that's what we're looking at, is developing, I know that we got some of these reports and I know that you guys are calling in, but we gotta do something to. No. Anybody else have any ideas?
Mr. Bush.
Paul.
Judge Shaw, on, on this, uh, list of the rules that y'all have on roads and, and Commissioner, 225, 252.212, I think addresses a very problem that you're sitting here discussing right now. It tells you what, in, in a county that appoints one or more roads to superintendents, the commissioner's court may adopt and enforce responsible and necessary orders and rules for laying out work on and improving of public roads. So, I mean, y'all have the deal there. Just, I, Mr. Siewert.
Before, before, now, now he might have more funds and everything, but before this last year, year and a half, we really didn't have funds to haul out roads, right? You don't have funds to haul out roads right now? I don't know exactly what you're spending the money on. I, I really, I, I know that you're spending it on labor and some materials. You spent a hundred thousand on materials this last year, ninety thousand. I don't know. I knew what, I knew what you were doing and all that, but.
He's pissed him with money on repairs. All the old trucks.
Basically, it's only a portion.
That's what I'm thinking.
I know. We discussed that too.
We need a company.
You know that was back.
Yeah, that's what I always do.
If y'all wanna have a planning session, we can have a planning session. We don't have to have that planning session tonight, but we've gotta do something. But it's gotta be in a formal meeting so we can sit here and talk.
Basically, the only thing that we could, I just kinda was thinking about it right here. We can't have Jeff coming to us every time he's gonna lay a road. We can't have it every time they have to cut.
But nature changes.
Every time that he's gonna cut a limb, he doesn't have to come to, may put it on the agenda. Every time that it rains and he's gonna put a blade, as long as he puts a blade on every precinct, well, I'll be fine. Because that's, you know, what would be equality between the precincts. I think the only time that, and I know right now we said we're trying to work something out, when he's on a terrible road, that has a terrible road. We have a lot of tree hunters. I know I've got a lot of them calling me. Something about a major tree that's been there a hundred and something years. Something you might have to go through that's historical. Building of a road with paving a road or just hauling out miles of road is gonna cost in excess of 50, a hundred thousand dollars. But really, really, I mean, what else would he come to us for? I mean, if he's gonna come here and he's gonna put on the agenda every time, well, it looks like it's gonna rain next week, I'm gonna blade these roads.
Well, I think correct, undertaking a major project like this one.
That's it, that's it.
But I think undertaking a major project like this one where, I guess road is no longer paved or what needs to be done, or what could be a good idea to help him with this road because this.
Really, just to develop the priority of the plan.
Right, that's what I'm saying. Now we know that something like this would be a big problem, you know?
But it's something we need to have on record, you know?
I understand.
You know what I'm saying?
I'm just kinda shooting it out there.
Yeah.
It's not really too many things that he would have to come to us unless it's something major of roads, tearing up a road, hauling out a road. From the way, from the way I see it, unless a.
Take it down free.
And I know we got a lot of problems with the roads because there's people from other precincts that talk to me and tell me that their roads are really terrible. And so I know there is, there is, there is a problem.
Like, how many employees do we have in the road?
How many employees we got? Seven?
Four up there, ten.
Ten, okay, because you hired.
Okay, if we have ten employees, we basically, every employee has 60 miles of road. That's from here to San Antonio. And that's shred this bar ditch, that could be two or three passes. Shred this bar ditch, that could be two or three passes. So this side, that's 180 miles. This side, that's 180 miles. That's 360 miles of just shredding for one employee plus blading it. And the same thing, that's three trips. And then Jeff, right-hand side, left-hand side, and the center. So our, our, our miles a road to employee ratio is not right. We need, I, I don't think anybody here is gonna disagree with me that we need more employees. I don't think anybody's gonna disagree with me. Nearly 600 miles is a lot of road.
We're doing it with, what, 15, 16, when, when it was just four precincts?
Sixteen, yeah, sixteen, sometimes more.
So, you know.
And, and, and we weren't really getting anywhere. Right?
I wasn't having a problem.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, well.
Countywide.
That's one of the decisions that we just made. And this is one of the deals, I think this is in our parties, is roads. That's where we gotta get us the money back into these people.
Once you get them back in shape, you don't think it's gonna rain then?
We gotta have the plan to get them back in shape.
You gotta get them back in shape. They've been run down way too long. That's reason.
What road, what road did you say that they, they put gravel on and they tore it up in six months? EOG?
150, not, 250.
Two, two, okay, 250. How, how long did it take for them to tear it up?
About six, seven months.
Say six months. What if they lay six inches of limestone solid?
Yeah, limestone.
No other base underneath, no caliche on them, they're just solid.
River gravel that was put on there a year and a year and built and they're down to that.
And how many, how long was it? How, what did they put on? What, a half a mile, a mile?
Well, just all the way to county line, it's, it's, that's, about two miles of it.
And all the two miles are torn up?
The first portion is the worst and it's, it's starting to show going up the road.
So basically it needs to be re-topped.
Yeah.
Again.
It's gonna have to get fixed again, it's the amount of traffic that's on these roads.
Right, that's my major concern right now, dumping millions and millions and millions of dollars on these county roads right now, you just said it lasted six months.
We talked to a gentleman we gave a permit to the other day, he's from the Fort Worth area, he said the thirteen years that the driven's been going on during the counties around there, he says they are down to no roads at all in some of those counties, that's how that is, made the road.
If, if we, if we do, like, do these roads, we got, we have to hold the oil companies accountable, I mean, and there's no telling they can't be or not help us anywhere.
Permit fees, those fees like we has, we had that one company coming in and offering us that money, we're gonna have to start being more proactive on that, 'cause I know the counties are capitalizing on that.
Still, these trucks, they tear up a molar road, there's no way on permit fees and all that, I, I, there's no way that we're gonna cover it, there's no way we're gonna cut, even if they give them tickets for overweight, they're not gonna cover a molar ground, six inches of limestone, there's no way.
A five hundred dollar permit for the entry people, and a five hundred.
What are they, what are they gonna do?
We had a company come in here the other day, and they're gonna come back and do that, but we gotta start taking some of those, we have to.
I just don't wanna take something that's too low, that we're gonna sign off on it, and then they got us by the Google, and we can't.
It's better than nothing, though.
It's better than nothing, but I wanna make sure that we have some kind of opening there, that if they damage it beyond, beyond what they're talking about, that we can still come back at them, I don't wanna sign off for nickels and dimes, and then, they, they got us, once we sign, they got us, they can tear up those roads, we fix it back up, they tear it up again, hey, you sign it, see, that's why I want, that's why we're calling them in here to talk with them and find out what's going on.
We're hoping we can get those to come along.
I agree, because they will, they will get us.
We have to have some folks in there to make themselves go in.
They'll get us, man.
He's coming back at the end of the month.
Yeah, 'cause they'll be, they'll pay one fee and then, hey, eight thousand dollars.
Hey, y'all signed it.
Won't buy before he loads the dirt.
That's nickels and dimes for that ground.
So what are we gonna do about the plan of action for the roads, are we gonna come back, are we gonna, do some kind of guidance thing with Jeff, so we don't, we're not running into these problems, does anybody have any ideas?
We can just, I'll, and I thought of a couple of things that he could come back to us, just as a part of the thing, I think maybe we could put on another agenda, and it's all to on it, what we think, but basically, there's not too many things that.
You tell me what they, you think they are, so I can.
Any, any kind of pavement, any kind of tearing up of a pavement road, any car, any hauling out of a road, uh, beyond fifty thousand dollars? Twenty-five thousand, you wanna make it twenty-five thousand, beyond twenty-five thousand, 'cause a truck right now, it's gonna be a lot, he can't come to us because he's gonna do, you know, he's gonna go get fifteen truckloads, it's gonna cost him X amount, he's gonna have to come over here, and there's somebody waiting for those truckloads, it has to be within reason, which, depending, uh, in excess of twenty-five thousand, he has to come over here. And then just common kno, common knowledge, common knowledge, you know, just, I'm gonna throw one of those trees, 'cause there's a lot of tree huggers, for him not to tear up a big ol' oak tree or some kind of tree that's been there for a hundred years, something really.
Unless that tree is causing a, uh, problem, and a, a problem, this tree that we did take, this was leaning, and it kept coming down, the motor grader were having problems going under it.
But something like that would be, because there's so many people involved, and there's so many tree huggers, something like that, that would, that would clear, clear the road administrator too, cover the commissioner's court, and we've discussed it here, we take care of it here, and then if the decision goes.
So.
What do y'all, is there any other things?
So what are you saying, I mean, what are we saying, that we're not, I mean.
Okay, well, since tonight's discussion was County Road one forty-seven, and it was paved, I would like to address paving. I mean, and are we gonna pave roads, or are we not gonna pave roads? I mean, I think that's, that's what these people came for, paving for.
I, I think what they think, where they have pavement, they no longer have pavement.
Right, but, but, so they don't have anything.
You stopped us after answering that question.
It's pretty hard, it's pretty hard to answer, and I don't know, but I'll take some of your, your, uh, but you, you can't just sit down and, I actually say, you're gonna have to sit down and sit and brainstorm, and, 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 looking at the road to see what road needs water.
Well, if we have six hundred miles of road, well, we gotta pay sixty miles every year.
I don't think you can do that, I think you, the situation, the roads are in, I think you can do that if you got the money, and the.
Okay, so we're not gonna pave roads?
That's not what I said, what I said.
Then, you can't make that decision, and it's not on here tonight.
No, but I mean, I want, I want to address paving.
You wanna address paving with Jeff, so you're throwing that in there as one of the things that James is doing.
Yes, I mean, you know, like, James is saying fifty thousand dollars, if he goes, be twenty-five, or twenty-five, or whatever. But I, me personally, in my precinct and countywide, I would like to address paving, because you're gonna cut out, you're gonna cut out the dust, you're not gonna have to blade, I mean, once you pave a road, if you do it right, like three fifty-four, there's a rig down there, and, and we talked about this here a week ago, and you said it's holding up really well, but a lot of time was spent on that, but, and I know you put a lot of base on there, and you put good base on there, and because you put good base on there, and you watered it, and you rolled it, and you packed it, now, you might have done a week worth of, or, or two weeks worth of prep on, on the base before you ever started paving, and it paid off, now, now the road is, is holding up, is it not?
Any one, any paved road, if you got a legislature number right, been a couple years, it's been up and out of the roads, but if I remember right, correct me if I'm wrong, if anybody knows better, I think it's every ten years you should seal code, or every eight years you should seal code? So it, it does require maintenance.
Oh, sure, like, if you get a crack in a paved road, you, you look out here on the state, I mean, you see all these little lines going everywhere, 'cause they shoot tar in there, because once water gets down in that crack, and the truck hits it, then, that, it just destroys it, you have to keep it sealed, so water can't get underneath that thing.
And we'll, we'll set up a whole, just, make your score fresh, just coming here to talk about this, because, just like, you're concerned about that, I mean, I'm getting blindsided, you know what I'm saying, just from every angle, and I understand these, I would be angry too, if some, I, I mean, if I was living on a paved road now, I wouldn't, I would be angry too, and I would go somewhere looking for answers as to why, so we have to sit down and discuss that, and figure out the stuff, I mean, we would all be upset.
But, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, Bob, but the, the unit system is not about blading roads, it was about paving roads.
The unit system is just a more efficient way of operating the county, but before, before the unit system went in, you had forty-five pieces of equipment that required a driver, after the unit system went in, you got rid of, like, well, you had to sail two different times, you got rid of a lot of stuff, and you had fourteen people to drive those forty-five, you still got the fourteen people, but now you're using them more efficiently, you got rid of stuff that you didn't need, you got rid of junk, there was some junk that was here, and insurance was still being paid on it, years and years, there's trees growing up through the damn thing, you still paying insurance on it, this, all of this has been remedied because of the unit system, unit system is a very good thing, checking B-bill, checking the other forty counties that have got the unit system. And if you take a look at it, it just makes sense, and it will work very well, but you got to work with it, this is, right now, with the dry weather and the torn up roads and all the other stuff, nothing works, thank goodness you're not in the old wishes type, type of government still, because you never would get through, hell, the roads weren't any good way back there, think about it, there's a road out around our farm where the road, the ditches are higher than the road base, and I have a lot of love in cattle like that, because they weren't properly cared for all that time. Now you're going to have to pick up fifty years of bad payments and try to get it all done, it's not gonna happen overnight, don't matter what's due.
But we don't wanna make it worse either, we don't wanna take the pain to anything.
Yes, paving, just to start off, paving is not very wise, you have a lot of other things to do before you get there.
We understand that.
But I, I mean, you know, I, I was just under that impression, because i- if you do pave a road, you, you don't have to worry about those.
Well, I think the ultimate goal.
You don't have to blade it, you don't have to worry about cracked windshields, you don't have to worry about, uh, tires being cut, and people getting flaps, and I, I think that's something that the court really needs to think about, is, is a more aggressive plan to pave some of these roads.
Didn't have enough money to even make, you didn't have enough money this year even to maintain them, so, you know, well, that's a good idea, like, ultimately, the idea is to get them all paved, B-bill, been on the unit system twenty, thirty.